Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. This meeting hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@AIR.MA.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If I could ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any amendments to tonight's agenda?
I do not.
I do not. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Agenda is approved. Any announcements tonight? Okay, all right. Anybody here for public input? All right. This, it's not a public hearing for this Class II, right? We can start, we don't have to wait for the 6:05?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, good. Okay, well then let's move on to the Class II license, used auto sales application for 77 Pittsburgh Road, Route 2A Auto Sales LLC. Okay, do we have anybody here?
Edward Moore. Or, I'm sorry. Ed Moore, sorry. Ed Moore.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Edward Moore.
Hi. Okay. All right, what do we got here? Oh, please, everybody, make sure that you speak clearly. I know I have a tendency to cut away from the microphone, just for some reason, it bugs me, being there. The physical aspect, not the microphone itself. So, but please make sure you speak clearly for everyone.
So, Madam Chair, we have Mr. Moore in here. He's applied for Class II license, which is the ability to sell used cars. It's going to be going in the same spot, 77 Pittsburgh Road, where Route 2A Auto Sales was. They sold the business at the end of the year, last year. So, he has applied. We've sent this out to different departments. The taxes were okay. We didn't get much feedback. Other than the police chief was look, you know, just wants the applicant to be aware of the signage. Doesn't want any obstruction with the line of sight if you're pulling in and out, just because Route 2, obvious, or 2A is busy. And then we're looking to condition the license. He does not have a dumpster there currently. He doesn't know that he's going to need it maybe someday, but that we would condition the license to make sure that the dumpster is screened. Which the, the current owner had a fence around it with slats, so you couldn't see the dumpster. And then we're just kind of connecting with the police chief to talk about the lighting plan. Just, it helps the department on patrols, and they know what the inventory is and make sure there's enough light to actually see it, so.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Does somebody have their hand up, or is that, like, there's your mouse in the way?
I think it's the mouse.
Okay.
Well, we're at the mouse's.
Okay, just making sure. Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the Class II license application for Mr. Moore as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great, so what I'll do is I'll print it out with the conditions on it, and then I'll get it to you. I'll give you a call.
Perfect. Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right. Dan. Come on down. We've got quite a few items here.
Yeah.
You moved that, right?
For the usual, right?
You moved that. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, so, yeah, I have three items tonight, and one, Kimberly's going to be here for item number three. So, the first item is a recommendation to revise the fees for the Woodlawn Cemetery. So, since November, the Cemetery Commission has been meeting, and one of the first tasks where the Commission is tackling is the fees and regulations and getting those up to date. So, the Commission went through a process of evaluating the current fees, looking at what our expenses are now and what our fees are of similar communities nearby, and came up with the recommendation that's in your packet and also included in my memo here. So, I don't know if there's any questions related to it, but I recommend the Select Board vote to adopt the fees that are recommended by, it was voted for recommendation by the AIR Cemetery Commission at their last meeting.
No, I don't, what is an asphalt? What do you mean? You mean a crematorium?
So, yeah, when a, when there's an ash burial, whenever the cremation is put in an urn, and when you bury that, you actually have to put it in a concrete vault. It's pretty small, but relative to a full burial vault, but that's what it is, yeah.
So, the fee varies?
Yes, it varies, and it's listed actually in the packet. It's based on the size of the vault, and that fee is remaining unchanged from the original, but a large is $150, down to a small, which is $100.
Looks like a lot of good work. Anybody have any questions?
No. No questions.
I'll make a motion that the Board approve the recommended revision to the Woodlawn Cemetery fees as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Our thank you to the Cemetery Commission.
Thanks, that's using the attendance here. Okay, so the second item I have is just a brief presentation on the Stormwater Asset Management Plan, so if you want to pull that up, Carly. So, while she's pulling that up, the Stormwater Asset Management Plan, this was worked on with the town in tie-in bond, and was, I'll get into it in the presentation, but predominantly funded through a grant. And it's one of the, yeah, update on Stormwater Asset Management Plan. It's going to be a really helpful guidebook for us to, for the town to use, the DPW, for planning maintenance in the future, so. We'll get into it. Okay, here we go.
Oh, did you want to?
That's all right. No, go ahead. So, yeah, AIR Stormwater Asset Management Plan. So, start off, what is an asset? So, it's something that has value or potential value. There's some pictures here. We have on the left the highway garage rooftop, which was recently repaired. You know, that's an asset, there were some issues there, but we were able to perform some maintenance. You have vehicles. Those are pump impellers from the main pump station, where we actually recently, this past year, had, had one fail, so we had to replace it. So, those are assets. They're intended to serve a particular purpose for the entity, which is the town, in our, in my department's case, the public works. And it requires management in order to maintain a certain level of service. You know, how well do you maintain the asset to keep it at a certain level of service to provide, provide what level, what level of service you're trying to provide? You've got to keep the asset at a certain quality to provide that. So, next slide. So, asset management in one slide, it's, so you have your assets, you have to determine what level of service an asset, for example, a pump, you know, what level of service do you want to provide, what quality of service with that pump? Do you let the pump kind of not be able to pump as much as when it gets older, or do you need to replace the pump? You know, it's kind of, wouldn't really happen, but just safe for so that did happen. Criticality, is the pump, is it the pump for our Main Street pump station, or is it a, the third pump out of our three RAS pumps that you, we have, that you could probably live without for a little while to be able to replace? Life cycle, how long does the pump last? Can you perform maintenance to make it last longer? Does it make sense to do that, or does it make sense to just run it until it fails? And then funding, that's how we just, we decide on funding, by what level of service and how to maintain the asset. Keep going through that cyclical process as time goes on and, and the conditions change. So, why do we create the Stormwater Asset Management Plan? So, one of the reasons is it was defined in our MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. So, that program that the town entered into back just before the pandemic began at the end of 2019, we went through a process of putting together a preparedness plan, which to address climate hazards, understand how they may be affecting the town, and by the latest science and data, identify future vulnerabilities and strengths, et cetera, et cetera. So, one of the, the big items that came up was stormwater culverts. If we're having bigger storms, are we going to be able to handle it? So, if we want to keep going, Carly. So, through that process, the MVP process, there was a community resilience building workshop with various stakeholders in the community, various departments here, residents, others who have stake in the town. And we want, so through that process, there was determining to prioritizing actions to address vulnerabilities, for example, flooding, hurricane, power outage. What were the, you know, biggest factors to the town of AIR? You know, if we were a seacoast town, it might be, we might be more worried about flooding in that case, in that sense, from the ocean and washing in, but there's different vulnerabilities depending on your location. So, one of the, the, the work, building workshop report turned into top priority actions, and then high, medium, low priority actions. And one of the top priority actions that the Building Workshop Group identified was to build the Stormwater Asset Management Plan. Next slide. So, continuing, why create the Stormwater Asset Management Plan? You know, I could read through this, but it's, it's a data-driven process to maintain your assets. And really, one of the big things is we're moving from a reactive to a proactive program. So, if we didn't have a Stormwater Asset Management Plan, what would we do? It's kind of what we do now. When we know that there's an issue, we go address it. But now we have some data, we understand what issues are out there, now we can prioritize and proactively attack those issues rather than dealing with emergency-type conditions, which can be costly. Okay. Funding for the development of the Stormwater Asset Management Plan, so I'd started to mention, it was funded predominantly through a grant, $72,750 through the Mass Clean Water Trust Asset Management Plan Grant. And then the remaining funding was through the town. There was a town meeting article in 2021, which gave $38,750, but also the DPW provided in-kind services and our time to help with the plan development for a total of almost $10,000. The consultant and scope, so Ty and Bond was the consultant selected for the program. There was a select few we could use that were approved by the Asset Management Program through the Mass Clean Water Trust. And the scope of efforts, it starts with a desktop review, what information do we have now, you know, in our office? Then pull that all together, then go do field inspections, look at the drainage infrastructure and culverts, see what, what's going on out there, and make assessments. And then develop that into a report, an Asset Management Ranking Report, which I'll get into, it's based on probability of failure and consequence of failure. That's how an asset management program is, is developed. And then we have our final report, which was completed last November. So, the desktop review, we developed an initial asset inventory, we used the existing Stormwater GIS that DPW has. Ty and Bond in the DPW, we identified missing information and potential culvert locations, which would be looked at in the field. So, Ty and Bond took that data and made a map of existing locations and potential locations and, and used that as they progressed through to the field inspections. So, the field inspections were the next step, and we focused first on drainage infrastructure such as pipes, manholes, and catch basins. And we really focused on areas that with institutional knowledge and some, that we have at DPW, just the areas that are poorly draining, that are older, or that are concerns. Those were the highly focused areas. And assessments were completed by Ty and Bond and by the Highway Division using a, what's called Enviro Psych camera, which they can just put down into the, the manhole and zoom down the manhole as far as they can. So, it wasn't a full-blown CCTV like our wastewater program was, but it gave us a good idea, a general idea of how each pipe condition was. We also assessed a select amount of culverts based on the amount of time that Ty and Bond had allotted in the program. So, the ranking of assets, this is where I talked about probability of failure and consequence of failure. So, probability of failure, it's really certain characteristics that were looked at and accounted for in our, our Stormwater Assets, where age and useful life, maintenance and failure history, and then the conditions we found from our field assessments. There's really more than that, but in general, that's what we're looking at. And then consequence of failure, so what happens? So, if this asset fails, what's the consequence? Is it low or is it high? So, if you have a culvert, or if you have the West Main Street Bridge, that's a high consequence of failure, but if you have a culvert on a dead-end roadway, maybe it's high consequence because, you know, it's a dead end, but there's probably not much traffic there, we might be able to do something temporary, especially with a small culvert to allow passage, for example. So, when you get a high probability of failure combined with a high consequence of failure, that's when you have your highest risk, that's your highest criticality, is what it's called in asset management lingo. So, if you want to go to the next slide, Carly. So, this map, you can see it's kind of color-coded, the Drainage Pipe Risk Matrix. So, the blue dots on the screen are a little hard to see, but these are drainage pipes plotted onto the map based on the probability of failure and consequence of failure from actual field inspection done here in AIR. So, your consequence of failure really should, it may never change because it's the West Main Street Bridge. Even if it's brand-new, the consequence of failure is the same. If it's, you know, 100 years old, like it is, then the consequence of failure is still the same. It's going to shut down West Main Street. But your probability of failure as an asset gets older, the, the asset will move up that, the Y-axis there on the graph. So, you can see there's about, I think there's about 12 pipes that we have that are high criticality that need to be addressed, just based on this limited field inspection we did. And then the others are in medium areas. And kind of a similar, similarly, the culvert, culvert risk matrix, consequence of failure, you got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, about six that are in the high criticality. So, as you go down the consequence of failure, those ones that are in the medium right now, if those, over time, will move up toward the high criticality unless we do proper maintenance to those assets, because the probability will increase. And this was just part of the risk factor ratings as it was developed. There's a lot of calculation in the background, but a value of .5 was used. If it was above .5, it became high risk.
Can you just drive, something's wrong with the door.
Okay, yeah. So, the completed plan, it's a living document, like I said, as we go on, things are going to change, assets are going to degrade more, so we have to update it regularly. But the final AMP, it includes, the Asset Management Plan, the AMP we call it, includes a description of the drainage and culvert inventories, results of the Asset Management Plan, and field inspections. It's a risk-based prioritization process, and importantly, it gives us recommendations for capital improvements, further investigations, ongoing maintenance, and, and funding. So, at this time, there's been a five-year culvert action plan developed, and there's a plan for ongoing program updates. And I show that in a little bit. So, here's a picture, some of the drainage structures to kind of know what's in town. Structure condition shows approximately 71% are in good or excellent conditions from the ones that were inspected. And you can see the structure type breakdown, about 21% were concrete, 60% were block, and you can see examples of those here, concrete manhole or catch basin on the left, that's a manhole, and another brick slash block, that's a block catch basin on the right. So, the structures weren't in too bad a condition, the ones that were inspected. Drainage pipes, pipe condition, approximately 61% were good or in excellent condition. The reinforced, reinforced concrete and HDPE, a lot of those, those, that's a good-quality pipe, were in pretty good condition, good or excellent. When you get to the corrugated metal, which we see again and again in town, they're typically in fair or poor condition. Here's one on the right in the photo here. You can see the roots coming in, it's sort of curling, and you can't see the bottom, but typically we see the bottoms are rotted out from corrosion. Culvert results, so mostly, most of the culverts were corrugated metal or reinforced concrete. Distribution by deterioration severity, 33% of culverts demonstrated medium to high deterioration, and 21% are unknown due to high water levels or they could not access. So, there are several distributions here by culvert size. You see about 15% are greater than six feet in, in a diameter or span, but predominantly 33% are two feet, or are two feet, less than two feet, greater than one foot. So, we're kind of, most of them are less than two feet, over 50% are less than two feet. So, distribution by deterioration severity in the high category, 13% are deteriorated severely, are highly deteriorated, excuse me, and 20% medium, 21% low, and then we get kind of till you're unknown or no deterioration. And then there's a breakdown of material type. So, predominantly, we have corrugated metal and concrete. So, the five-year action plan was developed into a table, so this is to kind of help guide us, you know, obviously we have to factor in other finances as we go and, and go through the capital planning process and, and also budgeting process, operating budget-wise to make any adjustments here. So, you know, this will be something we look at, revise every year as we revise the Asset Management Plan, but essentially, there's a high criticality culverts and pipes that really need to be addressed soon. And then there's your standard pipe cleaning, CCTV maintenance, which is put in here as well. And I'd also mention, when we do our paving of our roadways, we do address drainage before we pave the roadway, so we don't have to be opening it up again right away. So, we look at drainage there, so that comes out as the pipe replacement. So, next steps, begin implementation of the Stormwater Asset Management Plan. We'll reexamine the Stormwater Utility as a funding source, which we do have money set aside from capital for that, and our, our new town engineer, who I'll introduce to you at a future meeting, Matt Hernon, is helping me work on that. He's developed a work plan to move that forward, it's ready for my review, and then we'll start getting the Stormwater Utility Evaluation going. Continue updating DPW's Stormwater GIS with field investigations, you know, this process, we didn't inspect everything out there, we got a good idea of what's going on, and update the Asset Management Plan routinely. So, little long presentation, but if you have any questions to discuss?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, and the last item, Kimberly, you want to come up? Kimberly's got a quick presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so, I'm here tonight because we are about halfway through the fiscal year operating budget, and we've had some significant hits to the budget, and felt that it was important to keep all of you updated and just let you know what's going on. Next slide, please. The biggest hit is the chemical costs to the water budget. So, water relies heavily on its chemicals. It produces the water service and water quality that we expect and come to know in meeting regular, regulatory requirements. We are members of the Northeast Merrimack Valley Chemical Consortium, and so what that does is that groups us with several other utilities in the whole central and northeast, so we are all bidding together on the same chemicals. And so that gives us the best prices possible. Unfortunately, so we aren't alone in seeing these dramatic increases, all the utilities around. Honestly, it's an industry-wide issue this year, is that the chemical costs have gone up dramatically. What I have listed here are three main chemicals that we use. Potassium permanganate went up 22%, that's used for oxidizing iron and manganese. Potassium hydroxide went up 73%, and that's used to adjust the pH. And sodium hypochlorite, which is essentially bleach, that went up 113% from last year. So, and again, and this is, these were low bidders, that came out of the consortium. There was nothing we could, nothing else we could do about it. In this chart, what I did was I took those three chemicals. The next column is the amount of chemical, like, units that we use in the last calendar year. The next column is taking that total and applying the fiscal year '22 prices. The next column is the fiscal '23 prices, and then the price difference. So, the bottom line is we're looking at a deficit of about $72,000, just on chemical So, that's, that's the worst of it. Next slide, please. So, on top of that, water is also being hit with services and supply costs. What I have listed here are, are just some of the big-ticket items that just have kind of put us, are just above and beyond what we would normally have to deal with on a given year. The first item are some engineering fees. We hired Woodward and Curran to do a Grove Pond Treatment Plant production evaluation. We also hired Kleinfelder to do a lead service line inventory study, which is a regulatory-driven program. Unfortunately, we also had well eight at Grove Pond just die one day, and the motor needed to be replaced for $17,000. There were some new regulatory requirements, which required increased sampling, and so analysis and supplies to run the samples, and that was at a minimum $6,000. It's a little more than that. And lastly, what I have here is that we are splitting with wastewater 50/50 the cost of doing the rate model for the rates this year, and so that, that is coming. So, I, I'll just, just really quick, going back on that. So, this total cost, the total cost of these few items is over $56,000. So, these were just very significant hits to the budget. On the wastewater side, luckily wastewater doesn't rely heavily on chemicals, they rely more on bugs and screens, so although they are also affected by the chemical increases, not so much and not worth noting, really. But services and supplies, definitely. Some of you may have heard that we are, the boiler is original to the building, 1978, and we've spent lots of money on repairing that boiler. So, this year so far, we've put over $17,000 into repairs of that boiler. We also had an issue at the central pump station boiler, and that cost over $10,000. As Dan alluded to before, we did have an emergency impeller and volute failure at main pump station, which cost $31,000. The UV PLC, the UV is used to disinfect the effluent water as it goes out, and so that broke, and that was $18,000. And again, the last thing is the rate model being split 50/50 with water. So, these few things totaled $87,000 between services and supplies. So, that being said, so we have been doing everything in our power to mitigate these costs, but we're halfway through the year, and we're starting to see that this is really becoming an issue. But that being said, But that being said, staff, we don't, you know, on any given year, we're not spending money frivolously. The things that we are delaying, the things that we're putting off is delaying purchases of other essential items. There are, there was a backup pump that was used that we didn't then purchase another backup force, if that makes any sense. So we used a backup and we haven't replaced the backup yet. There are software updates that need to be made and other equipment improvements for efficiency and just to be ready for, you know, main breaks and repairs. Essentially, we're going through supplies without replacing supplies, hoping to make it to the next fiscal year, that we can then start to purchase some of these supplies back and feel comfortable with the, with the stock that we have in order to maintain our, our services.
So just, I mean, I agree, you know, kind of putting stuff aside, but my concern is also like if we've put too much aside, is that going to bite us later?
Yes, it can bite us later because, and I'll give you one example. So we had decided, we, we saw that a chlorine analyzer was failing and we decided to not purchase a new chlorine analyzer. Let's see if this one makes it through to the next fiscal year. And then one day, it just did not. It died. We had to purchase a new chlorine analyzer. It was more expensive because then it was an emergency repair, an emergency service. And this chlorine analyzer was, it's required that we, that we measure the amount of chlorine leaving the treatment plant. And if we don't have that inline chlorine analyzer, we have to pay somebody to record the chlorine every four hours. So these are regulatory requirements. I, I know what you're getting at. We're doing the best we can and trying to make the best decisions possible within our...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
If, if, but we're doing so in a way, like non-essential items, we're putting off, essential items, we are getting. The chlorine, the chemicals, for example, that is an essential thing, we can't skip on. It's, it's something that we need now in order to maintain services. Next slide. So I'm basically just alluding to the fact that we may be requesting a transfer for retained, from retained earnings. We don't have a number tonight. This is really a heads up to let you know where we're at. If something like this were to move forward, it would require a special town meeting before annual town meeting. There are sufficient funds in the retained earnings. And again, the chemicals, services, supplies, the things that we have been purchasing to put us in this bad shape are all essential. They're all, we can't reduce or eliminate all the things that we've been purchasing. They're essential to providing the water quality and maintain the utilities that, that we, that we provide to the public. That's my presentation. I imagine you might have some questions.
Thank you for that update. It is greatly appreciated.
No, it's very sobering.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, when Kimberly mentioned, and we're still putting this together, if we need a special town meeting before annual town meeting, it would be that same night? I know the board is aware of that, but just for the public, on occasion, we've had to do that, so there would be this special town meeting and then the annual town meeting?
Well, I'll tell you, it's greatly appreciated that you've given us a heads up.
Would, would this qualify for reserve fund transfer though? Or is it because it's enterprise?
Enterprise.
It has to retain?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Okay, well, thank you. All right, Alan. Hi, Alan.
Good evening, folks.
Yeah.
Good evening, folks. I'm sorry?
Where's the heart?
Where's the enthusiasm?
It's coming.
Oh, okay, all right. You're saving your energy, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, good evening. For the record, Alan Menoian, Director of the Air Office of Community and Economic Development. So, the Town of Air and what we know is the former Fort Devens, the current Devens Enterprise Zone, has a rendezvous with final disposition destiny. How's that? Did that, okay, is that, okay. You know, 30 years ago now, the legislation was passed, okay? And in that legislation, 498 stipulated that in the year 2033, you know, up until that point, the towns, you know, have to do an analysis and make a decision, a determination if we would like to reclaim, take back our historic lands, whether that's the Town of Air, the Town of Harvard, the Town of Shirley. 2033 seemed like a very, very long time in the future and has been. It's not anymore. 10 years, as I've learned in my own life, goes, seems to go by so very fast now. And this is 10 years now ago, okay? So to that end, on Friday, March 10th, and Saturday, March 11th, the Town of Air is going to conduct the AIR plus Devens 2033 two-day symposium. We're doing this so we can galvanize the people in our town, our officials especially, all of us that are municipal employees, staffers, our board and commission members, our team, our full-town team. We need to together to focus on this because it's coming at us like a big, slow-moving train. It's coming whether we like it or not, and it's time for us to begin our process. I'm, thank Carly, next slide. And on these two days, just quickly, we're going to do a number of activities. We will have a wonderful invitational brunch. Right up in the great hall is going to be the primary venue, wonderfully catered by Wake and Bake. It's going to be a wonderful brunch. We'll do a presentation on the past, present, and future, all right? Sense of what is and was Devens. Then we're going to break out into mobile workshops. Our partners at MART have generously donated a couple of these shuttle buses. So as part of the symposium, as we know, we don't look at maps, we get out to the actual place. A lot of folks think they know Devens. You think you know Devens, looking at a map. You don't know it until you go out there and get a sense of the scale of the place. So we then will do our bus tours and workshops, our mobile workshops during the day. We will then come back here to Airtown Hall in the afternoon and break out in a series of panel discussions. One being meet our DEC representatives. Yes, we have residents of AIR who serve on the Devens Enterprise Commission monthly. A lot of folks don't know Jimmy Pennard, Marty Potry, Judge Rob Gardner. Another panel will be the chairman of our various boards, chairman of the Select Board, Planning Board, Finance Committee, Capital Planning, to talk about, have a panel discussion. What, what would be the municipal fiscal impact for the good or bad, the full sort of cost benefit? So we're just going to have that discussion, very general. We're going to meet our neighbors that live on Amon Street and Bates Street that are in the historic borders of AIR. They don't always think of themselves as AIR's residents and the folks in AIR don't know. They say to me, who are those people that live up there? And I say, they don't live in another world. They actually live in historic AIR and they're our AIR neighbors, okay? We're going to meet them on one of our panel discussions. They're very excited about that. I was talking to a number of them today. We are going to do a day two. We're going to do a little live morning show, Good Morning AIR, to break out to talk about what we did, a live stream, live Facebook streaming, what happened yesterday, what are we doing today? Folks want to, you know, check it out, what's doing. Then we'll have a public design charrette up in the great hall, where we will lay out large maps with trace and we all become urban planners and designers. Next, Carly, thank you. And by the way, all this ends in the creation and formation of the AIR citizens, okay? Devens 23 Commission. Here's the land we're talking about, that fascinating little notch of land. If you look at the map of AIR and say, what is that weird notch of? Well, there it is. This is Major Simon Willard's Nonacoicus Farm, the ancient colonial farm. That was very purposely, that notch is not by accident. And you notice includes Shepley Hill. This not only is the town border, it's the county borderline between Middlesex County and Worcester County. Okay, Carly. And just to get a sense, there's that notch again, there you see AIR, and there are the major rail lines. Why did military Fort Devens come here? Because of our rail lines and the rail hub. Next, Carly. And there's, you know, what came upon us in 1917. 1917. Back then, unlike today, if they're going to do something, oh, there'd be MIPA hearings and we'd have to, back in 1917, they just said, hey, by the way, we're going to put the largest military base in New England in your town. Live with it. And this is what happened. So the base was here for 80 years. There you see the large fields, drill and parade fields, which are still open, which is historic AIR land. Thank you, Carly. And again, just getting a sense there, that's a great map, actually, from 1939, just before World War II. You get a sense of the scale of Fort Devens going all the way down and across. Ours is actually quite little. The, I get, the more research fascinates me. AIR throughout, Fort Devens throughout history, anywhere you look, postcards, it's AIR Massachusetts was Devens. AIR was Devens, Devens was AIR. But you notice, very, very small portions of the land was in AIR. Most of it was in Harvard. AIR bared, bared most of the brunt, though, of the Fort Devens.
Right, but they only get in and out through AIR.
That's right. We were the front door and the gateways. That's why it was always identified as, as ours. That's right. Thank you, Carly. And again, just here's a very good example, and I know Chairman Livingston, we really focused on, we better understand that line. And there you see very clearly, not only the town borderline between Harvard and AIR, but that is the county line as well. Next, Carly. You know, and there it is. And again, you just get a sense of the scale, what we're talking about. 75% of the land and where all the large new developments are actually in Harvard. We have the Open Fields, Shriver Job Corps, Parker Charter School, the Open Fields, a portion of Vicksburg Square, some of that, and then it's really the riverfront and the historic airport. Next, Carly. And there you go. There's an example right there. You see that fascinating town borderline as well as the county line? And what's fascinating there, you see on Amon Street, the little streets there. That county line, not only does it run through the neighborhood, it runs actually through the middle of a house. So I assume if you're on the south side of your home, you're in Harvard. But if you walk in your living room on the north side of your house, you're in AIR. That's fascinating. And there you see Vicksburg Square in the upper left-hand corner and how that county and town cuts right through the buildings. AIR wants to see Vicksburg Square preserved and redeveloped. You don't know if our fellow budding towns do. This is what we have to start getting to the bottom of. Next, Carly. And there you are. And it looks small, but when you look at the scale of those buildings, when you're out there, you realize the magnitude of what we're dealing with. Next. And again, going right through the neighborhood there. These are the folks, if you meet with them and they say, do you live in Devens? Or they say, we don't live in AIR. We live in Devens. And I say, well, you, you actually, you do live in AIR. And that's going to be a fascinating discussion. Next. And again, going over to Barnum Road. There you see that line, literally going through commercial buildings and properties and how this is going to be sorted out is fascinating. Barnum Road itself sits in the Town of Harvard, but the entryway sits in AIR. Next. This is the old zoning map that they did back during BRAC decommissioning in 1996. It's obsolete, in my opinion, as a professional planner, especially the AIR portion of this. So we need to look at the zoning map as part of our symposium, starting, we may need to completely rezone, you know, what they thought of 30 years ago and what AIR needs for our future. Next.
We should hopefully have the updated map, I'll shoot an email...
Yes.
...tomorrow to see about getting that updated map.
Yes.
For the symposium.
But there you see again the zoning map, zoned for different things. I mean, they had Vicksburg Square zoned for innovation technology, which we all know Satan's not panning out as a use. But we really need to relook at this whole zoning map. And if it comes back to us saying, we have to zone this very differently, I'll say something provocative, for instance, you know? I look at those wide-open fields, those recreation fields that are there. I'd love to attract some world-class innovation firms and build some major buildings there in job creation. I bet there are a lot of folks in this town saying, that's the last thing we're going to do if we get those beautiful fields back. Now, this is the discussion about zoning and planning and there you go. All right? It's going to be an interesting discussion of what's going to serve future generations of the town. Okay, Carly. And again, the real prize to me, which is exciting, and it's sort of forgotten, say to folks, AIR is a riverfront town. And they'll say, what are you talking? I said, our entire western border of our town is the Nashua River. But it's sort of that mysterious land out there that we don't use and no one goes out there. The riverfront is going to, to me, the most potentially extraordinary future of this town, what we can do on that riverfront. And then the historic Moore Army AIR field, Carly, go ahead. And by the way, this is all Oxbo National Wildlife Refuge. There's a great shot of the AIR field.
The old AIR field.
The old former...
The non-functioning old AIR field.
Correct. Which sits right on the Nashua River, is a superfund site, has serious contamination issues which are being mitigated and dealt with. I would say to any of you, I worked 20 years ago at the redevelopment of the South Waymouth Naval Air Station. It's like this and now...
Air station there.
That's right, you were, thank you, right? It is now Union Point. And you see how it's redeveloped? This, to me, is a future innovation village on the riverfront, just like the MIT Fusion. This is where we're going to attract world-class future companies for AIR. This will be a village, we'll live about it. It's, I see that, now I'll be dead, we'll all be gone, but that is going to be for the next generations. Do we take this back or do we not? Okay, Carly.
Well, I'm hoping you're not dead.
Well, and there again is the Verbeck Gate, which would be in AIR, is in historic AIR, highly identified as the gateway. Okay, Carly. And, wow, okay, I guess that's just right, a list of who we're going, you can go off of that, that's how we do that to folks. And again, there we are. So I just encourage everybody, if you're able to, I think this will be one of the hot ones of the, this year, to come to it. We purposely set it up on a Friday, so it's part of the workday, the professional workday. And then Saturday, we'd really like to invite all the folks in AIR to come out and the design charrette, get right up there and let's start. Folks, I've learned in this town through the years, have great vision for planning and designing, okay, you know, future development here. So we're inviting everyone, you know, across the world, state legislative body, regional planners, business community, nonprofit organizations, everyone. And I hope if we really take this seriously, you know? I'm sure mass development will be watching what we're doing. And to me, the main point is, as always, AIR does not sit on its backside and wait. AIR moves. We drive things in AIR. And we're going to, you know, drive this process as well and make sure that we're in control of the future of this town and the lands that were Devens. We may not take it back. We may. It's going to be a fascinating process. I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much. If I can answer any questions.
First of all, I'm actually psyched about this symposium, which is saying a lot, but Alan has such a nice energy, I think it's going to go great. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Just one thing after kind of sitting through your discussion is, I want to caution to kind of let things play out, like, I understand everyone has a different vision of what they want to do there.
Yes.
And what they, you know, so like when you, you know, call it one thing, like you said, like revitalize Vicksburg Square.
Yes.
Maybe 10 different things to 10 different people.
Yes.
So let's kind of approach everything with an open mind and get the feedback from the public and see what path we want to take.
Yes. And I appreciate you saying that because right enough, in some interactions I've had already with folks, and they've said to me, said, Alan, you know, you seem to have vision and you tend to influence things and be, and they said, we have to all be neutral. We have to go into this neutral. And sometimes that's, and we've got to discipline ourselves. I know, I'm going to have to do that with myself and say, please, you're right. Step back and let it happen organic, and we need to learn together, right? What the answer is for the future. Okay, folks.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Robert.
Madam Chair.
What you've got? You've got to follow that.
We're going to try with the FY '24 budget. Madam Chair, members of the board...
More energy.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good, good evening. In terms of the administrative update, you have the warrants that I approved since the board last met in the packet. Our major focus, I was looking at the calendar this morning, and town meeting is two months from this Friday. So we are in the, in the final leg of the marathon leading up to town meeting. Our primary focus has been all things budget, which I'll, I'll get into on a couple of the action items. In terms of the administrative update, just a couple of highlights. On Friday, the... In terms of the administrative update, you have the warrants that I approved since the board last met in the packet. Our major focus, I was looking at the calendar this morning, and town meeting is two months from this Friday, so we are in the, in the final leg of the marathon leading up to town meeting. Our primary focus has been all things budget, which I'll, I'll get into on a couple of the action items. In terms of the administrative update, just a couple of highlights. On Friday, the town did receive its certified free cash from the Department of Revenue. The general fund free cash, one, over 1.9 million. Water enterprise, over 4.6 million. Sewer, over 2.4 million. Solid waste, 132,553. And ambulance, 251,095. So overall, the, the trend has continued. This does speak to the fiscal strength of the town and to the financial management. I do wanna thank the internal finance team for all of their work on this, as it was a new endeavor for many of them. Barbara is the finance manager, Carrie is the town accountant, and Lynda is the assessor. So we are positioned again in good shape as we move towards town meeting. I would like to do, for your meeting on March 7th, just do a brief presentation, the by-board will have met then, as we do every year, on sort of recommended uses for free cash, and have that discussion. As the board is aware, there are some things, historically, we have funded in part through free cash, such as our OPEB liability contribution, replenishing some of the U-DAG, of course, stabilization and capital stabilization, and some other matters. So I hope to have a, a discussion on that for March 7th. The by-board met today, as I mentioned, and finished, really started over the last year, but especially since October, took a deep dive on the financial policy review. Every two years, as the board is aware, we review and update the financial policies. So the by-board has completed its work for this, this update. The next step is we'll be sending the proposed revisions and update to the select board, the finance committee, and all departments for sort of an interdepartmental review. And then we're hoping to take them to the finance committee and here to the select board by the end of March, beginning of April at the latest, for review and approval by both bodies as, as we move forward with those. At the March 7th meeting, I'd also like to provide the board with an update on the development of the annual town meeting warrant. At this point in the budget process, we begin to shift the focus also to the development of the warrant, as a lot of the annual town meeting warrant has to do with the budget and financial matters. We're in a position to begin to, to populate that and put that forward. As the board knows, the deadline for all warrant articles is March 31st. At this time, we haven't received much out of the normal standard articles, but I will have an update on March 7th for you with that. And as the chair knows, she's also the chair of the cable contract negotiations, those remain on target for March 31st is when the license expires, and if, if all goes as planned, the committee, the cable advisory committee will be coming to this body to present the license agreement for your consideration. So that's sort of the administrative update. I don't know if there's any questions from the board, if not, I'll get into the, to the budget matters for tonight. Okay. I have a very brief presentation on draft two of the budget. So as the board is aware, last Friday, we transmitted what we're calling draft two of the FY24 budget to the select board and to the FinCom. It's also posted to the budget webpage, and wanna just talk about some of those highlights tonight. The finance manager highlighted on draft two in orange, any lines that were changed, increase or decrease. So this is just a, a brief snapshot of where we are with draft two as we move towards the second public budget presentation on March 8th. So, the draft two overview, before draft two, before the school assessments, and draft one, we did not have the school assessments, the budget is at 6.48%. With the school assessments, it comes in at about 5.5%. You'll recall that draft one, we were at about 7%. So there have not been, at this time, the reductions we had hoped for, which I'll touch upon in a second, two areas. One I touched upon at the budget presentation is the energy issue, though some progress has been made. And unfortunately, the health insurance has had a significant increase. Since draft one, we have reduced, draft two has been reduced by $116,000 since draft one. So what changed, really, just to highlight on here, these are just some of the, the major changes, reductions. So the first, the reductions, treasurer tax collector, about 4,000. The facilities, I am pleased to report, since the first public presentation, he, the facilities director, we've been able to reduce the electricity accounts by $6,000. He's still working on that, as well as the fuel and the natural gas, which is still outstanding. You'll recall that there was a significant increase to these accounts this year. The DPW tree plan, the DPW director, upon reviewing it, was able to reduce, it was considerable amount of funding in there from the plan from his predecessor. We feel that we could reduce that by about $22,000 and still move the tree management plan forward. In DPW stormwater, there was a reduction of about $100,000 to the culverts. That's based on, again, the DPW director taking a hard look at, A, the historic amount spent in that account, as well as the capacity for the upcoming year to, to do the work. So there was an opportunity there. Small on other employee benefits, about 7,000 reduction, the health buyout program, about 2,400. And then the health insurance, though it was able to be reduced by about $18,000, we had budgeted for 15,000 with the target goal of 10, we had budgeted for 15%, the target of 10%. Unfortunately, it came in at 14%. So some savings there have not been realized. So there was about 159,000 in reductions there. What did we increase? Since then, the police department, there's been an increase of about $13,000 on some of the lines. This is based on better quote results on some of the services that they have, a small increase in fire, council on aging, another small increase. As the board knows, as we move through the budget process, as departments get some more specific information, there can be slight adjustments either way. On the HRA benefits, that's the health, HRA benefit to employees, has been very popular. There's been a need for an increase there, so about 22,000 in increase. Draft two also assumes, and I'm not trying to jump the gun, because we're talking about cost of living tonight, but to sort of factor the cost impact and do that calculation, draft two does, does assume that a 2% COLA, which is about a $52,000 impact. So the total with the 2% COLA is about 74, 745 added. So what's outstanding as we move towards what will be sort of the final draft? The non-union COLA recommendation, which we're discussing tonight, and in full disclosure, was calculated in the draft, that draft two. Contract costs for the town hall clerical union contract, we anticipate that to conclude this month, and those costs would then be factored into the budget. Also, as the board is know, knows, there's a separate warrant article with a brief presentation at town meeting for the costs of any contract. There are contract costs for three personal service contracts, two of which the board will be discussing later this evening. And we are still waiting on the final insurance numbers, the non-health insurance line items. We have placeholders in there that we're cautiously optimistic that might be an opportunity there as there is each year. So as those come to fruition, we'll keep the board updated. So the next steps from draft two to draft three, so we will continue to scrub draft two of the budget. Scrub, meaning looking at everything with departments, reviewing spending history, talking about capacity to fulfill certain projects or services through the year, looking for further opportunities. Number two, which is really a key point, is to continue to refine the energy and fuel budgets. The natural gas accounts are still outstanding with the maximum worst-case scenario impact. The reserve fund is at 200,000, and could be reduced further based on actual history and the end of the pandemic. So historically, we had between 100 to 150,000 in the reserve fund, increased it to 300,000 when the pandemic began. We reduced it to 200,000 initially for draft one. Realistically, could easily, between 50 to 75,000 more could come out of that based on, on the history and current impacts. So that's something we should further discuss. Conclude the negotiations, as I mentioned, on both union and non-union. And our goal is to have draft three for the second public budget presentation on March 8th at 6:00. So the, 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 the big drivers have been the energy and health insurance, and as mentioned with draft one, there is one and a half new positions, if you will, in the budget. So that's sort of a, a snapshot as we continue to, to refine it. Without the energy increases and the health insurance increase, we would be sitting more at, as opposed to 6%, more around 4%. So we'll keep working, working at it. So that's just a updated draft two. Draft two, you have, it's also on the town's budget page of the webpage, and if folks want a hard copy, they can request one through our office, and we welcome any questions.
Does the finance committee have a date set when they're gonna discuss the reserve fund transfer?
So they, they met with FIRE last week. They're meeting with police on March 1st. They're meeting with DPW on March 15th. I am gonna reach out to the chair to ask if they would consider having a, a meeting for the purposes of the RFT, as well as some of the other items. I know they're gonna have a meeting at the end of their reviews to go through the whole budget. Yeah.
Luckily, the chair's with us, and he's giving us a thumbs up.
Yeah.
Is there an RFT pending? I'm confused.
No, for the reserve.
The logitary, no.
Yeah. Cause if, yeah. Yeah, I would like to have the, the FinCom, as you know, review and weigh in on that.
Yeah, I think what would be helpful for them is probably a five to seven-year trend of what's actually being used out of there. Cause I think we always set a high number, but the actual number of RFTs tends to be relatively small, and it was always historically high because of the show of attack.
Right.
Before we actually joined the region, we used to come out of, they'd come out of what, you know, like, tens of thousands of dollars additional net worth part. So I, I think that trend would help them make an informed decision.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all?
Thank you. Okay. My next dynamic presentation, number three, the FY Capital Plan overview. So as I had mentioned, the Capital Plan Committee has completed the lion's share of, of its work, and I just wanted to provide a snapshot, obviously Selectman Hood is the chair of that committee, and he may have some things that he wants to jump in on. Just wanted to give a snapshot of just some of the major items. As the board knows, at the March 8th presentation, we do do a segment on, on all of the capital. I also wanna stress that we will be doing outreach between now and town meeting on capital, further presentations and discussions, as we want people to, to be informed. So for the purposes of tonight, it's just a thumbnail sketch of a piece of it, and would be happy to discuss more moving forward. So the capital, so just to more, you know, for the public, the Capital Planning Committee has completed its review and recommendations for all FY24 capital on February 2nd. All of the FY24 capital plans, presentations in minutes can be found at the, on the budget web's page, which will take you to capital. Hard copies of any of that are available upon request, and folks would, would like them. The Capital Planning Committee met from November 17th through February 2nd, as they generally do meet from November through February each year. So there, just wanna stress, there was a whole process, and there were a lot of good meetings going through the requests and vetting and so forth. Next. So I wanted to just talk about some of the major projects. Again, there will be other capital, as folks will see, we'll talk about on the 8th, you'll see if you go to the, the webpage. These capital items are also important, but in the interest of time, I just wanted to hit upon some of the big ones. So the first one is the replacement of the West Main Street Bridge. The Capital Planning Committee voted to recommend 3.5 million to replace the bridge. That's a solid number from a lot of work from the DPW director. That cost includes a 12% contingency in the committee, which is sort of new as we entered this new era, has had a lot of discussions about contingencies because of the volatility of, the volatility of the world we live in right now. As Mr. Hood knows, this, all these major projects had costs went up as a matter of weeks since the presentation. So the 3.5 million is a solid number. It does include a contingency. The committee further recommended, in accordance with the town's financial policies, this will require a debt exclusion, subject to approval by the annual town meeting and by the ballot at the annual town election. So obviously, the DPW director and I have discussed, we'll be doing some further informational outreach on this as we move forward. It is a significant infrastructure project. It, as the committee learned, and was unanimous with the committee, it needs to be done this year. So it's, it's a very important need, and so just wanted to, so you know, publicly just talk about that briefly. Again, we'll be doing more outreach. If you go to the page, it was a lot of good work by the DPW director on that, and I anticipate there will be a presentation at town meeting on this. And lastly, as the board knows, by the end of March, the board will have to vote to authorize a debt exclusion question. So it obviously has to pass town meeting and the ballot. There is a second debt exclusion, as you can see up here, the replacement of the fire department ladder truck, one point, over 1.6 million. This also includes a 7% contingency. When the fire chief first presented this in November, this is one of them that the price went up considerable from the time he presented it. No, the town does not have much control over that. Again, this will require a debt exclusion, same process as I just outlined before. And interestingly, from the time that, assuming this is approved by town meeting and by the ballot on May 9th, we're looking at about a 22-month period before it will be delivered to the town. So this project also illustrates, if you will, the new sort of supply chain issues that we are facing in some areas. Again, we will be doing public informational outreach on this as well, and there's a bunch of information on the page related to this.
So one of the things we do wanna stress is on the fire truck, where there is the 22-month delay, the impact of the taxes will not be for another 22 months until we actually take possession of the fire truck. The urgency that the Capital Planning Committee has for the, for the fire department is that we need to get in line, we need to get this approved, so we can put the order in, we could, we can get the ladder in a timely manner before, before the current ladder has significant problems.
So we gotta order it before the prices go up even more again. Jeez.
Right. Thank you. The key, key point.
And, and just, to follow up on that, you know, when they, when we take this to town meeting, you know, we wanna make sure that the explanatory notes clearly state like what he's just saying. So that, you know, people who aren't watching, when they get that in the mail, they're like, oh, okay.
Yes.
So we wanna make sure that happens too. So, okay.
And we are planning, we anticipate, again, presentations on both of these for town meeting. And the presentation, besides the need and cost, will also include the estimated, you know, tax impact to the taxpayer and so forth. Okay. A third project that fell into the major category was the A third project that fell into the major category was the Kitty Junction Playground Project. The project needs an additional $966,626 to complete. This is in addition to the funding that was approved last year. When the Parks Commission came and the Parks Director before the capital planning committee, the first thing was to increase costs for the playground equipment in what is called the pour and play, I should have put surface, it says service, pour and play, surface is this specific ADA compliant surface. And there were some cost overruns on the remediation. That was a significant amount of money needed for the project. The chair had, they came before us, I think, three times at capital, they've come before here a couple of times. In the end, the plan is the capital committee has recommended $220,000 as a capital borrow. So that would be subject to town meeting approval, not a debt exclusion, but still subject to town meeting approval. And the Parks Commission has submitted an application, they did on February 1st, to the community preservation committee. And the committee, they were going in for 500,000 and the CPC committee suggested they go for 750,000. So they're looking for 750,000 from CPC. That application is there. The public hearing for that is coming up, I think, on March 1st. That would require town meeting approval under the CPC article. So when we get to town meeting, assuming the CPC process is completed, there would be two articles in two different spots of the warrant, 220,000 to borrow with the balance of 750,000 from the CPC to finish this project.
So a quick question. Has, has the Parks Committee mentioned like any ideas as to fundraising?
That did, that was mentioned, I think, here, Madam Chair.
We brought it up here.
Yeah, I have not heard anything since. I can follow up with them.
Yeah. Because I think too, that that plays into whatever they need, if, you know, also, you know, going to town meeting, they can say, yeah, this is what we need to borrow to get this process started, but we're also, we want to do some fundraising for other pieces of it too. But I think, and also kind of an important way of, you know, letting the people at town meeting to even know, like, oh, you know, do I want to buy a brick or whatever it is, it's, you know, park bench or something like that. So I think that that needs to be not forgotten. And then just a quick question, because I know he had brought it up, when he had been here, and of course, we have made no decision, I just want to remind as to what our discussion is on the art front. Okay? So we haven't had a really finalized that discussion, so we need to figure out what we're going to do.
Okay. Got it. And then lastly, last, so there are some major capital projects in water and sewer. These projects, as we touched upon in the DPW director's previous presentation, are funded under the enterprise funds and impact the rates. So these don't impact the general fund. These are just, there are, these are, there are two major ones in water and two major ones in sewer. There are some other smaller, important projects as well, but in water, the Washington Street Water Tank painting for $450,000. This is the water tank up near the Page Hilltop School off of Washington Street. It is a preventative maintenance measure in painting it, which needs to be done. The annual water main rehabilitation at 300,000 capital over the last several years has made a commitment to supporting a water main rehab, a water main replacement each year, and I think that has worked well. Then on sewer, the big one is the inflow infiltration repairs at 1.2 million. And you saw some of the pipes, I think, that the DPW director showed in the previous presentation. There's a lot of inflow infiltration work to be done. As we do that work, it improves the overall wastewater system, efficiency and plant and so forth. And then the boilers that was mentioned, the boiler from 1978, replacing at 100,000. And we're also hopeful that that will help on our fuel account as that, you can imagine 1978 efficiency when it comes to oil. So those are the major ones from water and sewer. And again, as I know, if these projects are approved by town meeting, they're funded by the respective enterprise funds and they impact the water and sewer rates, which will be factoring these into the rate development. So that was just a very brief snapshot. I do want to point out, if you go to the budget page, specifically the summary matrix that Selectman Hood put together, it give you the whole snapshot. It was really well organized and he populated it. It gives you a whole snapshot of all of the projects, the funding source, the vote and any notes. Definitely check that out. So with that, if there are any questions from the board, again, we'll be talking about capital on March 8th as well.
No questions for me?
Nope.
Thank you.
The last item that I have, Madam Chair, I'd ask Amanda Lewis to come up, is the FY24 cost of living adjustment, known as a COLA recommendation. So as the board is aware, per the financial policies, each year at this time, we make a recommendation for your consideration on the COLA for non-union personnel. That also includes the call firefighters and the elected officials that receive a stipend. Per the policy, we look at a series of indexes and information to come up with a recommendation. I want to thank Ms. Lewis for doing all of that work and you have her memo in the packet looking at the various things set forth by the finance policy to look forward to a recommendation. And she and I also discussed it in looking at the information. And as you can see, and this is affecting, you know, everybody, obviously the CPI, the consumer price index, over the last 12 months alone has increased by 7%. Energy prices by 29 and a half, food by almost 11%. You'll see the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, specifically their index for CPI increased by about 2.1%, but they tend to lag behind the data I just mentioned. Amanda checked with some of the surrounding towns and you have the results in her memo. It's most, everybody's looking at about 2%. Social Security, one of the areas we do look at was 8.7%, but we're also aware, this is the first time in a very long time that social security COLA has been that high. Massachusetts minimum wage is increasing by 5.25%. And then all of the collective bargaining agreements include a 2% COLA. So weighing all of that against the budget realities and affordability and the tightness of the, of the budget, we're recommending the board consider the, a 2% COLA for FY24. The estimated budget impact, the budget impact is $52,000 and it covers a total of 54 employees. And we'd ask for your consideration, as the board knows, that this is still subject to town meeting approval under the omnibus budget article. That in the explanatory note, it clearly puts what the recommendation of the board is and the cost impact, subject to town meeting approval.
Can you, I know you broke down, you said 20 communities were more than 2%, three local communities more than 2%. What was the average in there? Was there something they were?
I believe the average was 3. And they did cite because of inflation.
Yep.
That's actually, where are any impressions? It's more in favor of 3%. But I think, sorry, Madam Chair. The important part for me is the last one, which is all the collective bargains have a 2% COLA, so therefore it's even across all of the employees, have a 2%.
I think we'll all change to, the town meeting will really be a little smaller, 10%. I mean, I agree with you. I agree with you, but yeah, right now.
Yeah.
And also that, yeah, so.
I'll make a recommend, motion that the Congress like for recommended town meeting for 2% COLA for this year 2024 for non-union employees.
All the way to there? The chair says aye.
Amanda, thank you. Members of the board, thank you. Unless there are any further questions from the board, that concludes my report for this evening. I appreciate your, your time and consideration.
All right. Any, any questions or questions?
Nothing for tonight?
Okay. Okay. So we have the meeting minutes from February 7th. I didn't, I didn't see any issues.
I didn't have any. I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for February 7th, 2020, as presented.
Seven. All is in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay. And with that, I'll make a motion that the select board move into executive session, pursue it to match general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Conception Number Two, non-union personnel, fire chief and deputy fire chief personnel services contract. And that we adjourn from, that we do not, we will not reconvene in open session, but we will adjourn from executive session.
Aye.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Sean, he's got it. And the chair says aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are in executive session. Thank you very much.